Everybody ready?
Good.
Welcome, everyone, to the joint meeting of the Eugene City Council and E-Web. And welcome to the E-Web Board of Directors. We really appreciate you being here. And I wanted to start the conversation out today before we do introductions, but I just wanted to, after a moment, to acknowledge that both the City Council and E-Web approved Silt in the last week. And so, I appreciate that both agencies were able to come to a creative solution that met both agencies' needs and provide more certainty going forward. So, thank you all very much.
If I may, I'd like to convene the meeting of Eugene Water and Electric Board and call it to order as well. So, thank you and welcome.
So, why don't you just start with introductions?
All right. Well, first, I'd like to say thank you for the City Council. My name's John Brown. I'm the E-Web Board Chair. I'm in my third term. I represent Wards 4 and 5. Yeah, we're going around. Introductions, E-Web Board.
Got it. My name is Steve Mattel. I represent Wards 1 and 8. I'm currently the Vice President at E-Web. In my day job, I'm the Sustainability Director over at the University of Oregon.
I'm John Simpson. I am serving my second term. I was soon to be serving my third. And I am President/VP. I originally served and represented Wards 1 and 8, and at this time, I serve at large.
Roger?
I'm Roger Gray, General Manager at E-Web, and that is my day job. Nice, sometimes.
I'm James Manning, E-Web Commissioner, representing Wards 6 and 7.
And I'm Dick Helgeson. I represent Wards 2 and 3, sneaking up on my second year on the Board. I've lived here 40 years and came here when I was 18 to go to the university and love this place and retired a few years ago and decided that serving on the Board was one of the ways that I could repay my debt to this community.
We're assuming that most people watch us on tele... I don't know if most people watch us. A lot of people watch us. At any rate, we're familiarly on television, I guess, is what I would say. So, anyway, we're going to head on into our agenda for today. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, over the last couple of years, there have been just some really nice partnerships between E-Web and the city on a variety of things, and we anticipate that going forward as well. I know at the staff level, we work together extremely well on a whole lot of things. And today really is just an opportunity to highlight some of those partnerships at a relatively high level, and so there won't be time probably to delve into the details and the nuances of those. But I do think it's an... through the discussion and through the presentations, you'll find that we'd be very satisfied with a lot of things that are going on between the two agencies. And also with that, we'll just really start it off with a short video highlighting a partnership around our wastewater facility, so.
All right. We're going to get into the vulnerability assessment.
Ecology is not one of our partners.
It's me and vulnerabilities. Is Jill here? Yes.
Yes, please.
Let's see if this thing works.
This is a vulnerability assessment, key findings, and emergency planning partnership. Welcome.
Hi there. My name's Jill Hoyenga. I'm a planner with E-Web, Water Engineering and Planning Department. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share some information about a developing partnership to create a culture of preparedness. Research published in February 2013 indicates that the Willamette Valley is due for a major earthquake. And the Governor's Task Force that wrote the Oregon Resilience Plan also concluded that communities are very poorly prepared. So, very few communities are ready for a major disaster of the scale that Japan experienced when they had a magnitude-nine earthquake in 2000. So, issue to call to action.
Just a second. Who's on the line?
Is that... that's Betty.
Well, I think Greg's on the line.
I'm on the line, Mayor.
We're hearing a rattling noise on the...
You type very quickly, Greg.
Oh, yeah. I gotta put myself on mute. Sorry.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jill. Go ahead.
Fair thing. Anytime. So, Eugene Springfield is answering that call that was issued in the Oregon Resilience Plan, and we're finding that preparing for the big one is helping us prepare for responding to small emergencies in a much better way. The kind of emergencies that we experience more commonly are winter storms, flooding, and wildfire. And if you want to see the slide, turn around. I'm not offended by that. Thank you. So, the purpose of preparedness is to build resilience as defined as the capacity of individuals, businesses, institutions, and systems within a city to survive, adapt, and grow, no matter what chronic stresses and acute shocks they experience. Preparedness is a shared responsibility. Studies show that when everyone, individuals, businesses, agencies, all conduct emergency preparedness, that recovery from emergencies is significantly... that time of recovery is significantly shortened and enhances survival and adaption. The natural hazard mitigation planning process revealed that local community leaders, businesses, and agencies are notable for sharing information already. Matt McCray, behind me, is here. He co-facilitated that process, and he's here to answer any questions you may have at the end of my short presentation. One example of a diverse local partnership is Track Town USA, which has helped set the stage for Eugene to host many national, international track and field events. So, Eugene's great track record of collaboration is a great advantage to us as we are creating a culture of preparedness. So, in the area of personal preparedness, E-Web Market Research found that the American Red Cross and FEMA were the most recognized sources of emergency preparedness information. So, as a result of these findings, E-Web sought a partnership with the American Red Cross because they're the credible educator. And so, they're going to... they have agreed to help us educate our customers. Also, E-Web's experience in water conservation messaging indicates that customers and citizens respond better when they have something tangible they can hold in their hand and bring into their home. And that's why the 2014 Preparedness Program features a BPA-free emergency water supply storage bottle with preparedness how-to tips. Megan O'Hara from the American Red Cross is here to help me show you an example of the bottle, so I don't have to handle too many things. And also, she can answer questions at the close of this presentation. I also provided a handout at each of your areas that has more information about this program and also the order form, because you can order online today at eweb.org, and the address is on your handout. Regarding business preparedness, E-Web conducted a water forum last November 2013, and some of you were able to attend. So, one of the needs identified at that event was business continuity planning assistance. It turns out that the Lain Preparedness Coalition was already planning to hold a business continuity planning workshop this year, so E-Web stepped up to co-host. So, that's going to happen at the E-Web Headquarters Building, and that... we're also promoting that workshop to our general service customers, especially our medium-to-small-sized businesses locally. Emma Stocker from the University of Oregon, she's the Emergency Management Specialist there and is going to be the lead facilitator for that workshop, and so she can answer any questions you might have about that event. The packet that was handed out has a couple of postcard invitations, so that you can give those to your business contacts, and of course, you're invited to attend if you wish. Regarding public agency preparedness, inter-agency planning developed. There's the business preparedness side. One of the cool things... this was a cool thing, is one of the good things that a local business might want to find out in doing their business continuity plan is if their bank has mobile ATM capability in the case of a large disaster. Of the public agency preparedness was some of the planning we've done has created this federal disaster assistance location map, especially identifying co-located emergency services, including emergency water distribution, which is the picture inset on the side there. Now, E-Web is working on site agreements with the property owner so that we can get permission to deploy at these sites and have planning ahead of time set in place. Inter-agency resource coordination also includes training and exercises. So, an example of how training and exercises has helped us respond back to small-scale emergencies is this last winter season where we practiced a multi-agency water distribution exercise at the City of Eugene Public Works yard, and that paved the way for responding to an actual emergency later in the winter season. And while that deployment was canceled at the last minute, we found that the preparation for the planned exercise really helped us. Those protocols came in really handy and accelerated the process for the request and the response for those services had they been actually needed. Local utilities are members of regional mutual aid coordination efforts and have access to websites for requesting assistance by resource type or skill type and other criteria. But that all depends on the Internet being in place at the time of the emergency. So, we also have signed mutual aid agreements with neighboring utilities that include inter ties with... between the water distribution systems. What you can do as policymakers to assist us with creating a culture of preparedness is to put policies and initiatives in place or encourage them to be put in place that create an atmosphere of constant learning through inter-agency planning and training, limited or safe failure scenarios, which is what those practice exercises are all about. Rapid rebound can be facilitated by establishing inter-agency mutual aid agreements ahead of time, and those agreements can have flexibility in place, such as problem-solving clauses that expedite solutions to hurdles that we didn't know would happen in an actual emergency. All of this is important to... in all of this, it's important to build our response capacity, which includes developing alternate water sources, also includes staging response equipment on both sides of the river in case the bridges are rendered unsafe for travel, and strategic coordination of access to fossil fuels for generators and for rolling trucks necessary for restoration. So, in closing, I'd like to emphasize the need for partnerships. And just one example of how partnerships open opportunities is the natural mitigation... natural hazard mitigation plan submittal is a prerequisite for federal funds eligibility. And the successful grant applicants for such funds already have demonstrated robust local partnerships that exist before applying. The bottom line is that fostering partnerships to create a culture of preparedness will build resilience in our community that will sustain regional prosperity even in the face of adversity. And with that, I and my colleagues would be happy to answer any questions you may have. I'd ask Mayor Katie Piercy to facilitate the question-and-answer portion of the time that we have together, and thank you very much for putting us on the agenda.
For being here. Questions? I guess the question I have is where do you think we are in the preparedness process? Where do we go from here?
The continuum?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it depends on your department, is the short answer. We've done a lot of planning. We have a lot of lists of materials needed for emergency preparedness on the water and electric side. We've put our capital planning in place in order to stage acquiring those materials. We have done a lot of training. Actually, we've done training with many different agencies, Lain County, City of Eugene, E-Web, all in the same room together, getting the Incident Command System training. And so, I feel like, at least on the water side, that the mutual aid ethic for a response is well on its way to being established. And that incident that we had earlier this year during the winter really proved that that training and the exercises have borne fruit.
The only follow-up I have to that is I think that's great. I just would say that that sort of proves it on a regular basis. We need to do retraining because new people coming and going all the time. So, having learned that, I hope we use that to do... as part of our preparedness and keeping people up to speed on what we're trying to do.
Right. Yeah. It's a continuous continuum of emergency preparedness. And so, preparing our agencies is a good start, preparing our staff within our agencies to make sure their families are taken care of so they can be responders for the public good. That's all... that's all stuff that's in place and happening.
And the only other thing that I always think about as people try to prepare in many ways for emergencies is it's important for us and our elected roles to know what we're supposed to do, too. Because in my case, I'll be asked what's happening, and I'm sure everybody around this table will be asked what's happening. So, it's just going to be very important for you to think of us when you get in that position and keep us informed so we can help. I think that's our job. Yes.
Thank you.
I'm really gratified to see all these different partners coming together, because in my experience, it's the team that really makes it work.
Yes.
If the team has been together before, has worked together, and is familiar with each other, and has trained together and worked together, you can accomplish incredible things. I've actually seen on the ground. I'm particularly impressed to see Megan and the Red Cross here. That's really an important part of this entire process, that they can provide that important assistance as well. So, this is just great. I'm really impressed, and I'm glad to see that you're taking steps to provide people with the emergency stuff that they need. And this is a great system. I'm really impressed with it.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to turn to John Brown here.
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead. On you.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I agree with Counselor Pryor. I think the cooperation and the mutual training and the planning is really great to see and, I think, can instill a lot of confidence for us and the rest of the public that we're thinking ahead to these scenarios that we can anticipate, some of which are going to happen, whether it's flood, fire, earthquake. I have a question that might be more directed to the City Manager and Roger around how we deal with contingencies in terms of funding for responding to these types of emergencies. Obviously, if it's a big enough disaster, we might see FEMA or federal money coming in to help, but I just wanted to raise that up as a question in terms of how we budget for these kinds of emergency situations.
I think from our perspective, we don't have a specific line item that says emergency operations. Although on any given year, our departments do respond, winter storms is a good example of that, and our Public Works Department will... they may have additional snow removal that is higher than what would be normally budgeted for in a season, or tree removal and cleanup of parks following windstorms and those kinds of things. And so, we don't budget it separately, but as those events do occur, then of course, they take on those costs, and then we figure out how we can deal with those costs and actually pay for those kinds of things. If it does reach a certain level and emergencies are called up the line, then we may be eligible for reimbursement through FEMA funding. I'd also like to mention that this is one part of the overall emergency response and that agencies throughout the community do come together, not infrequently, both in planning for planned events. Some of those have been the Olympic Trials and those kinds of things, in which we actually put in place the Incident Command System or the system that we put together for all agencies to coordinate and be able to take a look at and deal with any kind of emergency. So, we do practice those, and we actually put them into place for a variety of things throughout the community, and this is just a really nice addition to that system that's in place.
Counselors, a quick answer for E-Web. On an annual basis, we budget for what we call the routine emergencies. And so, for example, we know we have storms there. We don't know the date, and we basically look at a long-term annual average of that, and we handle that in the normal budgeting process. This past winter in February, a large ice storm that hit the city as well as E-Web very hard, and that was what... I've only been here four years. I'm told from the longtime people that that's probably about a 1 in 25-year event, and for there, we have what we call our operating reserves, and we went into our operating reserves. And collectively, while Public Works had a lot of tree work, for example, the agencies, both Public as well as several utilities in Lain, Lynn, and Benton County collectively met the FEMA thresholds, and we worked collaboratively to meet the FEMA thresholds, and we're all receiving some FEMA reimbursement, which is helpful. But we don't necessarily count on that, so that's why we use those reserves from a cash flow standpoint, because we have to pay the bill, and it's months later that we get reimbursed. So, but in the... for the mega event that we're concerned about, the 9.0 Cascadia event, we will all be having to plan ahead of time, whether we're managers or policymakers. What we need to do is our work ahead of time to make sure that we have procedures, policies, adequate funds in place. So, when the operations people, whether it's the fire police or utility workers, they have to get the ground running, and they'll be managing the event in real time. So, I would take Jill's advice to us is that we need to do our work, and that includes on the management side as well. I cannot underemphasize how good the cooperation is among the agencies. Chief Kearns recently sponsored a FEMA event. He invited all kinds of agencies around Lain County to that, police, fire, utilities, and we're leveraging resources and sharing much better, and I'm really pleased to see that, because sharing is going to be the key to the recovery.
Thank you.
That's great. I refer to you as Commissioner. Is that what I refer to you?
No. John works. We don't know that protocol. Thank you.
Just your chairman.
Your chairman.
Yeah. So, a question for staff, and maybe for the people that are watching this. When are we going to get to the level of detail where a community member can know where they go to get water in the event of this emergency? We, you know, we understand the critical importance of water to survival, and if we had that earthquake 10 minutes from now, we've got 150,000 people. Nobody can move, and in two days, they're going to need water. When are we going to get that level of detail to the community about where would people in regions go? How would we get water for survival? Is there... do you have a timeline when that's going to happen?
I love your question, Commissioner, because I'm a details person. So, I'm going to give you a detailed answer. Once we get those site agreements in place for deployment, we will... we hope to get permission to put signs up there saying, "In an event of emergency, this could be a water distribution site." But the nature of the emergency, the location of the emergency, and transportation routes will determine the actual deployment, and that will be... that information will be distributed through all media channels when that time comes. But those pre-selected deployment sites that were on that federal map that I showed on that preparedness slide, the public agency preparedness slide, those, I hope, will have a sign that says, "This could be a deployment site." And it's at a shopping center, or it's at the high school, or wherever that agreement with the property owner actually gets signed, and we have a deployment plan. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just was wondering if there's a timeline for when you think you may have that.
Timeline for when? December 2014.
Thank you.
Mark it down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be back at you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to supplement President Brown's answer with it. So, the... those water bottles are all of our customers' best friends, and between now and 2014. After 2014, the distribution sites will be set up, but our longest-term solution is more than 2020 to 2021... 20 to 20 to 2021 timeframe where E-Web is moving towards a second water treatment plant. Even with that, though, in a major event, there will be whole neighborhoods that are without water because of the damage to the distribution systems. So, those distribution sites will be their second-best friends, but their first-best friend will be that water bottle. And that is... the personal preparation that Jill talked about is really a critical part of this, and we can do that immediately.
Yeah, thank you. Our plans, by the way, for those deployment sites, we don't plan on being able to distribute water any sooner than 72 hours, and that's why our General Manager was saying that the personal preparedness is the first best friend. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to follow up to Counselor Soret's question about budgeting for storm events. We, I believe, talked back in February or so when we were debriefing the big storm we had this past year about climate change contributing to increased frequency of storms going forward, and possibly, well, that we should be thinking about that and budgeting accordingly. I was wondering if you could give us any kind of update, Roger?
Commissioner Mattel and Counselors and Commissioners, I think that we are trying to track the influence of climate change on multiple accounts, what's going to do to our water supply or electric supply, but also damage to infrastructure. And I think there's pretty good evidence that the severity of storms and the cost of storm recoveries, whether it's here in Oregon, but evidence, for example, is sandy back on the East Coast. The severity is becoming greater, and so utility infrastructure and probably other kinds of infrastructure, transportation, et cetera, is going to have to become more robust and more resilient, and it's going to cost more to do it. And if you look at some of the sandy responses, looking at the transportation and utilities, we're looking... they're looking in New Jersey, New York, and investing billions of dollars to improve infrastructure to be more responsive. And so, it's going to be making those infrastructures more robust, and they'll be more expensive. But again, that's the institutional response. The personal response and preparedness is really critical, because that is probably going to be the most important for the first 72 hours, is the personal preparation.
That just makes me... makes me think about how... and I know you talked about that as part of this, is how we have a real campaign to, on an ongoing basis with the community, to lift that level of a personal responsibility around this, because I think, as you pointed multiple times, that's going to be key for everybody. And so, for us to all figure out what our part in getting that message out is, it's going to be a really important part of that, people being prepared.
Well, at the risk of playing chicken little, we must not forget that the bulk electric grid would be possibly severely damaged in the event of a large-scale earthquake. I've heard estimates possibly that the bulk electric grid could take two months to come back online, and so, we have... all of our pump stations have the ability for remote generators to be hooked up so that we can transport water at a minimum level, but it's still very important that mission-critical operations in industry have their own ability for an uninterruptible power supply. Please also don't forget, in the absence of electricity, fuels and gasolines cannot be pumped either, and so, things are basically start with whatever the level in your gas tank is. And I have also heard reports that we can count on most bridges in Oregon becoming impassable for some time. So, our city truly will have this strange split thing going on, and that might be one of the things we, as a community, want to look at with priority, is mending the north-south connection across the river as best we can.
Thank you. Other comments? My only other comment is in preparedness around this table is it strikes me to be nice if these identification signs had their names on the back and the front, so that I could... might not have a brain breakdown and not remember everybody's names here, so just a thought here.
Turn this around.
You! Okay. We're going to move on to the next item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and signing.
Next up is...
Downtown Fiber?
Yep, Downtown Fiber.
Thank you. I'm Denny Broh. I'm with the City of Eugene's Planning and Development Department, and I'm going to provide a brief, non-technical overview of the really exciting partnership, the Downtown Fiber Pilot Program or Project. It's a partnership between the City of Eugene, E-Web, and ElCog. Dean Alston is here from E-Web, and he'll be here to answer any technical questions, because I'm not qualified to do that. Simply stated, this is a project that will provide high-capacity broadband fiber to a couple of downtown sites. It will really help us gain a better understanding of the opportunities and the challenges that are involved, and a longer-term goal, and that long-term goal would be to establish a world-class fiber network that would really support the entire community. Just some quick background and context. The community is... Just some quick background and context, the community is undergoing several planning initiatives, and this, this project really has the potential to advance many of those. For example, Envision Eugene, the Downtown Plan, the Regional Prosperity Economic Development Plan, the Climate and Energy Action Plan. We also recently worked with the State of Oregon to do a community broadband strategic plan, and E-Web was actually a key partner in that effort to generate that plan. And this project was really identified as, as a priority action item in the plan, and the action really was to support the current generation and next generation of entrepreneurs and businesses throughout the community. And that particularly had some focus on downtown. Therefore, we identified some City of Eugene Telecom Tax Funds, and that's what we're using in partnership with some resources from E-Web and some resources from ElCog to fund this, this pilot project. Because this is a pilot project, many of the goals revolve around what we want to learn from the project in the short term, so that we can leverage that information, that information that we learn, and advance that into some longer-term community goals. For example, we want to gain a better understanding of the technical issues and the market conditions related to the extension of fiber from the existing backbone to individual buildings, and ultimately to individual users of high-speed, high-capacity fiber. We want to analyze how these businesses ultimately benefit from this, not only from a cost standpoint, but from a productivity standpoint, and see how this asset really advances their productivity, their operations, and ultimately helps them compete more globally. We also want to look at various models and options and determine if this pilot can be scaled up to reach more buildings and more businesses. And again, in the, in the long term, we want to move towards a comprehensive fiber network which supports our regional prosperity goals. So why is this project, pilot, pilot project important, and how's it, how does it relate to regional prosperity? First of all, high-speed, high-capacity fiber is a plus for the entire economy, I think that's a, that's a given. In particular, it's, it's really essential for high-tech, high-growth, key, extraordinary data requirements, and where the speed at which they transmit data is really critical to their being able to function, and really for their ability to, again, to compete on, on a global level. And of course, many of these high-tech, high-growth companies are companies that have higher wages, so we want to support their advancement, because we have our eye on those jobs and those wages as well. I will just add that, you know, you, some of you may have heard of the Silicon, the Silicon Shire, and there's many software-related companies, about 80 of those are downtown, so the pilot program is focused on downtown, and then you can see how this pilot could really start to grow, when you consider how many of those firms are really located in our core. When you're looking at downtown, this is kind of the infrastructure that lies underneath the, the ground downtown, and this is really just representative of the electrical conduit paths and the vacated steam paths that could be used to extend the, the fiber network. I'll just say that E-Web is looking at all of these options. I think that the positive thing here is, there are options, and we'll look at various options and try to figure out what's the most cost-efficient way to, to access those critical buildings, those critical businesses that we're targeting in the downtown area. The pilot will start with bringing dark fiber into the Broadway Commerce Center and the Woolworth Building, and both of those are located at Broadway and Willamette. And the path is basically from ElCog's Wix, with, which is the Willamette Internet Exchange, which is only a block away, and it'll go basically from there to both of these buildings. There's a few reasons why these buildings were selected. First of all, it's a relatively easy path. Secondly, both of these buildings have high concentrations of software slash tech companies located in those buildings. But maybe most importantly, the City of Eugene's made really significant investments in both of these buildings, and having these buildings have that fiber asset really creates an opportunity for them to be fully occupied, adds value to those buildings, and ultimately protects the major investment that we've already made in, in these buildings. So we're making good progress, and I'm happy to report that agreements between the city and ElCog and E-Web have been signed. The design work for the first pilot system has been completed. Materials have been ordered. Installation of the pilot, the two first sites will begin probably in September, and then the dark fiber would be offered theoretically in October. And really, our goal is to light up that dark fiber, have it subscribed so that the end-users have access to that and can ultimately benefit, and really make some progress towards our regional prosperity goals, at least in, in a pilot kind of format, so. With that, if you have any questions, one of us might be able to answer.
I've got Counselor Pryor in the queue.
Thank you. I really appreciate this presentation and everything you said, and I, I want to absolutely reinforce it. I've been in conversations with a number of businesses in downtown who are high-tech companies, who deal in high-speed internet and who deal in software development and design. I can't overstate how incredibly important this is to the economic development of downtown. We can bring a huge number of high-tech, clean, software-driven, financially beneficial companies into downtown if we can provide them with the infrastructure that they need. It would be like saying, "We can bring freight and trucking in if we have a railroad or a highway." It's exactly the same kind of metaphor. They're, they're crying for the ability to have high-speed access to do the work that they do, and lure other people here. And this is just the first baby step in that direction. You don't look at this and say, "Oh, that's, that's great." It is great, but it's only the first step. We need to wire downtown not only more extensively, but also provide cost-effective and economical ways to get that fiber in the ground to those organizations in those buildings. Broadway Commerce Building is an important one, but I know of several other buildings in downtown that also need the same kind of infrastructure. And I appreciate that the city and E-Web and the other people are working to only make this the first step. They understand as well as I do just how critically important this is to making downtown even more economically viable than it is now, and its cost-benefit ratio is way, way in our favor. So, for the amount of money it would cost us, we could make an enormous return economically for downtown and actually for the whole community.
I've got Counselor Soret and Counselor Poling.
Thank you. Yes, I absolutely agree with Counselor Pryor. This is really exciting and important, first baby steps. And I think in addition to supporting downtown business, and particularly the high-tech business, I hope we have a vision that this could expand out into the community, because I think part of that entrepreneurial spirit is also being able to have a home-based office and, and also have folks who aren't necessarily engaged in commercial endeavors to have similar access in terms of high-quality, high-speed, affordable internet access. This is actually one of those areas that we are lagging behind other developed economies in terms of, we pay more for our internet, and it's much slower than what folks are getting in other countries. So I had a couple of technical questions. What if ElCog relocates out of the office building that they're in now?
That'd probably be a better response, would probably come from Milo. You're talking about if they had to relocate the, the...
I mean, they're, they're just, they're in an office building because they found some office space that they like. It's not like they're married to that site, so I'm just curious.
They own the building.
Oh, all right. Well, that's the answer then, right. I thought they were leasing it, so. They own, ElCog owns that building that we're, all right. So there's an answer. And I noticed the map was saying, trying to use spare electrical conduit or old steam plant. Is that because the cable itself will take up so much physical space, it couldn't be co-located with other current electrical conduit? I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, the most, most expensive aspect of the project is just getting in, interest into the buildings, and E-Web does. What we were showing on the slide was we have fairly extensive infrastructure downtown in that 20-block area, including the abandoned steam facilities, and then we have quite a bit of spare electrical conduit associated with our electric distribution system. So, it's, it's preferable not to go jointly with the, with conduit already filled with conductors, so the idea was to use spare where available.
Great, thanks. And has there been any thought to the pricing for this, for businesses, once it's set up?
There's a target, there was a study done locally, and there's a target price structure that's in place that we're trying to shoot for, and it's going to be, it's, it's a compilation of, you know, E-Web rates for its infrastructure, ElCog rates for COLO at, at the Wix facility. And so, this, this pilot is essentially trying to prove out if we can hit those price points on a, on a near-term, small-scale and long-term basis.
And so, what's the timeframe? I, you've got the implementation date, but what's the timeframe for how long the pilot is expected to last? And then, can you articulate any next steps once the pilot phase is complete and you're ready for a bigger implementation?
So, we have, through the telecom program, the TAC Telecom Tax Grant Program, we have a three-year allocation, and it's approximately $50,000 a year. So, what you see really is kind of part of the first phase, and we, we do have an ability to pilot this a little bit further in the next couple of years, but it's, it's, it's going to be within a, a few buildings. It's not going to be really expansive, given the resource that we have. Our goal really is to learn as much as we can from this pilot, and then really take a look at what are the market considerations, what are the pricing considerations, what are the technical considerations, and then try to figure out what's the best path to take from there. So, we're not jumping to a conclusion of next steps yet, because we haven't learned everything that we probably need to learn.
Great, thank you very much.
Counselor Poling?
Yeah, thank you. I just have two, two clarification questions. You've used the term "dark fiber" a couple of times. Some people, that might be a dietary supplement, because I just, but I just get a, a clear definition of, I think I know what it is, but I just want to make sure we're, we're talking the same thing.
Yeah, dark, dark fiber refers to just making the infrastructure, the asset, available for, for a carrier or a user to provide services over that. So it's just a transport media, basically, unlit.
Okay. And then the other one, on one of the slides, there was the term "last yard connections." What does that mean?
As mentioned earlier, it's, it's that last, it's often referred to as "last mile." It's the connection from, from the carrier to, into the home, so it's like coax, access to the cable or, or wireline service into a home. That's, that's just that last connectivity from a hub into the, into the homeowner or business.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the presentation, gentlemen. I, I was very pleased with the timeline, with the fact that this has come together very quickly and been, been, and comes to fruition so quickly. Can you tell me, do you know the timeline for Google Fiber in Portland?
I do not know that.
But they're not lit yet at all. Do you know if they're anticipating being lit anytime soon? Reason I ask that question is because along the lines of what Chris said, the, this capacity, ability for software firms and for businesses is critical, and one of the pieces around a successful economic development strategy is having that kind of synergism that comes from lots of businesses doing that. When Google announced that they were going to do that in Portland, that made a lot of our local folks look up and go, "Golly, maybe we should be up there, because that's where the id place is going to be." It seems as though, from what we're seeing with this presentation, as though Eugene may be first, and I would think that's something we'd want to announce as loudly as possible, certainly in Portland and otherwise, so we can say, "Hey, Eugene got fiber first, and we're ready to do business downtown here." So I hope that, I suppose, once this process gets complete into September and October, that we're making appropriate use of, of letting people know that fact, because that's a, that will be a critical economic development tool, I would think, that knowledge getting out. Thank you very much for your work on this.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'm just wondering, what are the costs for the pilot? Total cost? Estimated?
Total estimated cost is right at $75,000 to $80,000.
That's reasonable. And what are the source of the funds?
I, I mentioned the Telecom, Telecom Tax Grant Program, so basically, through the Telecom Fund, we make investments that benefit the community, City of Eugene Investments, so $50,000 of that is from that source, and then, as I mentioned, resources from E-Web and, and ElCog, some of their in-kind time and so forth is embedded in that.
Thank you. Yeah, well, the benefits that could accrue from this pilot are certainly worth a modest investment, you know, maybe make. Thanks.
Commissioner Helgason?
I just echo some of those same comments, and appreciate that we're looking once again at how to leverage the investments that the city and E-Web and others have already made in, in fairly extensive facilities. I remember 15, 20 years ago, when we were all making those investments, kind of the vision and the hope was that, that in addition to supporting the needs of our individual agencies, that this has become a platform for broadening the community benefit that was available with these facilities. And I know we've made great strides working with other agencies through the public agency network and other aspects of this, but this is the first time I've seen us revisiting in partnership the means by which we might broaden that, that community benefit. And I guess the hope 20 years ago was that, that the private sector would move in and provide us with solutions, and we wouldn't be needing to worry about how to extend these benefits to further our economic development goals, but that having not been so much the case, I'm glad to see us back at this, and I hope your pilot project is successful.
I too think it's a great project, and I think there's a, in conjunction with what Counselor Clark and Pryor and others have said, I think there's a really good message here about what you, what we can leverage together, and the kind of support we're trying to give to our economic development for our community. I think those are all really important messages to, to convey, because the public wants to know we're trying to create a better economic environment here, and they want to know that we're leveraging what we have together instead of doing everything separately. So I think these are really, this is a really important thing for us to continue to talk about the things we're able to accomplish together that we might not be able to accomplish separately. It's a very good message. And I also continue to worry about parts of our community that don't have on their own enough access to the internet, and, because that's part of just even being able to play in our society right now, and for some people in our community, for that to be out of their reach is really prohibitive to them moving forward economically in our community. So I hope as we look to the business community, we look to the business of everybody being able to have access to this in our community as well.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to say that I, I just know from having done some work with some of these companies, and, and that, that level of capacity, that broadband capacity, gives us something else that you might, it was just an idea that's occurring to you, you might consider. One of the things we do is extend the city Wi-Fi in the downtown area, that the city of Eugene Wi-Fi is a, is a, is a resource that we extend, but because of the bandwidth, it doesn't extend very far. Once you light this up, you can put a, you can put a signal on the top of that building with the, with the, I suppose, cooperation of whom, with whomever you work on delivering service here, that can create a Wi-Fi signal for the city's free Wi-Fi that will be a great deal wider than what it is right now through our entire downtown. And I think that's an agreement that we want to look to make with whoever in the private sector you, you work with on this, because it'll create a fairly extensive opportunity for anybody to get that signal in, in the broad area of downtown.
So with that, I don't see anybody else in the queue here? Oh, yes.
Well, I would add that every E-Web substation and reservoir is served by a fiber optic line, and not just one. I believe it's a, I believe the cable has 215 conductors in it, and frankly, only eight or nine of them are lit up, and so the rest of those are sitting there waiting for a broader expansion of this type of network. You suggest Wi-Fi...
You suggest Wi-Fi. So these transmitter or repeater stations could certainly be located at subs and reservoirs to help roll out the entire system or at least penetrate on a broad basis, if not necessarily just focus on the downtown region.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. Thank you very much. Next up is the Riverfront redevelopment update. I believe Denny stays in his seat.
I'm up again. So I've been asked to introduce this topic and then I'll hand it over to Janine Parisi from eWeb, who'll provide an update and some more details on the Riverfront project. We always like to start and make connections and look back at our downtown plan. We're actually celebrating the 10-year anniversary of our downtown plan. And recently, we've kind of done an informal review of what we've accomplished over the last 10 years, looked at all the goals and objectives and tried to gauge what kind of progress we've made. It's really clear that this isn't a plan that's just sat on the shelf. When you look at the goals and objectives, we've done a lot and accomplished a lot. And the list of projects, and I won't go into all the details, but it's very impressive. You know, most are familiar with what's going on downtown, investments made downtown. These are projects that are really measured in the hundreds of millions of dollars. In almost every case, we've strategically invested and thoughtfully invested to make these projects happen. And the public investment in the downtown core over the last few years ranges in the, you know, 25 to $30 million range. So we've heavily invested in what I think is really thoughtful, some thoughtful outcomes that really the community has planned for over the last many years. And these are investments that I think have been transformational. A lot of new energy downtown, a lot of interest in investing downtown, created really kind of a special people place that people want to engage with and people want to be at. Clearly, the next 10 years, when we look at the next 10 years, the focus is going to shift to the river. And the eWeb Riverfront property is obviously one of our primary focuses as we really look at one of the fundamental downtown plan goals, and that's reconnecting downtown to the river. And really, it's kind of an objective that hasn't been fully realized. I think we're making good progress, but we'll talk about that in a second. The importance of the eWeb property really from our perspective is that if you look at the downtown plan boundary, the eWeb property is the only property in the downtown plan boundary that actually touches the river. We've talked about 8th Avenue a lot, 8th Avenue really being the unified path that connects downtown and brings people to the river. And, you know, there's some very positive signs that we can see in progress that we make towards that objective. Projects like the Federal Courthouse and the Northwest Community Credit Union, the Hub project, which is currently under construction, a potential new city hall or a planned city hall, and also, you know, the potential for a permanent home for the farmer's market and the butterfly lot, and the potential for a county courthouse facility on the city hall property. The Shed, we've sold property to the Shed and they have a vision of creating a music school behind the current Shed facility. We see some emerging businesses along 8th Street. The new Sam Bonds Brewery recently opened. And there's some potential development of the 8th and Mill property as well. Not too long ago, this is really kind of where we stood with our vision for 8th Avenue connecting to the river. And I think we've made some, again, some significant progress. We've made, again, thoughtful, strategic investments that we think will help us reconnect downtown to the river. And you can start to envision as some of these investments come to fruition, what this really might feel like and really what this experience might be for the community. So symbolically, and I guess realistically, where we stand now is we've moved all the way to this gateway to the river and that really is the eWeb Riverfront property. And we think, again, this is a critical link to our goal to reconnect downtown to the river. The fact that we're here today in partnership and we're actually providing an update on a critical path to develop the Riverfront site is just very, very encouraging. And on a personal level, there's a great sense of optimism that we're on the brink of something very, very special when we start to think about breaking through that barrier and looking at finally, finally getting to the river. And I'll just close by saying the Riverfront project is really a culmination of a comprehensive vision for the Riverfront area. Many years of planning, the downtown vision, the courthouse area plan, the downtown plan, most recently envision Eugene, the eWeb Riverfront master plan. And again, today, there's just a tremendous sense of partnership and progress that we've gotten to this point. And again, it's really exciting. We can truly see that years of planning are starting to take shape. You know, the city and eWeb and the community is invested in a vision and an outcome that we want to see. But the most exciting thing, I think, really is the opportunity that's in front of us. And the opportunities really are kind of endless when you think about the potential for this property, when you talk about opportunity for world-class open space, recreation, arts, culture, education, environmental enhancements, new jobs, new housing, opportunity to create a long-lasting place for the community to gather. Sounds like a lot of weight to put on a single piece of property, but we really know that this is a 100-year project. Whatever gets built there is going to be there for 100 years and we need to do it right. And this sense of partnership really is an opportunity, I think, to get the best outcome for the community. So with that, I'll just say I'm really thankful and appreciative of the partnership that we've had and of the opportunity to work with Janine and Kevin and the eWeb staff. And we're really looking forward to the next step and what happens next. And really, this is really legacy kind of level work and it's really exciting to be working with eWeb on this project, so.
Thank you for, what a wonderful setup. So my job here is to bring us all up to speed on where we're at now, but I wanted to start with just maybe going back in time, back to 2008, so we can just kind of remember the path we've been down together. So, that's okay. We'll try to do both things at the same time. So for us to even make this property ready for redevelopment, the first thing we had to do is move a bulk of our employees and our storage and our equipment off the property over into the West Eugene site with the Roosevelt Operations Center. So that center opened in 2010. And that really set the stage for us to begin in earnest this planning work to transform the property as Denny was just talking about. And really for us at eWeb to create the value to the community and the return to our ratepayers that we've been promising. Just a quick recap of the master plan. That work began in 2008 and we jointly set together the community advisory team. That was a jointly appointed team that worked with our consultants, Ralbroca Architects, to develop the framework for how we would transform this property from its industrial nature to this mixed-use, vibrant, active space that brought people to the river but also brought people back to the downtown as well. And all the while, celebrating the history of the site because that's very important to us. The plan is a balance of new construction, adaptive reuse and public open streets. It specifically includes 14 acres of mixed-use development and the way that, that could be any combination of retail, commercial and residential development. It has eight acres of parks, plazas and open space and includes three acres of protected riparian area from redevelopment. There's five acres of paths to improve public access to the river, but also to bring people into that interior site because right now that's all just asphalt lots. So there's not a lot of connectivity through the site. And of course, adaptive reuse of the steam plant and other design elements to help us tell the history of the site into the future. Really proud of the level of community involvement and interest this project has garnered over the year. We had over 1,000 people weigh in with their vision for the property's future, something that's uniquely Eugene, that meets our high qualities of, for standard, for high-quality development, but also environmental stewardship. And one of the things we heard again and again was to make it realistic and economically viable so something actually happens on the site. Following the master plan adoption, we turned our efforts to codifying the master plan into land use regulations. Rezoning the property consistent with the master plan is a key redevelopment entitlement. This 18-month effort of detailed translation of vision into regulation resulted in a hybrid form-based code, which I think will be a model that can be applied to other areas of Eugene. The entire package was approved by the council in July 2012 with almost no public opposition and no following appeal, which is really remarkable for our community when you think about a change of this magnitude. So I'd like to attribute that success to, we had great local support from local consultant teams, but also city staff really just worked with us all along the way. This is a very detailed map that you can't really see very well, but really what I wanted to show you here is that one of the things we've been doing since the adoption of the code is figuring out how to continue to move towards certainty for redevelopment. And a big piece of that was how do we make the Riverfront Park happen? This is something that a lot of our community is interested and excited in happening and it just feels like a critical linchpin to kind of set development on the right path. So as you can see, there's a pretty ambitious open space program that's in the plan. It doesn't all have to happen, but even the most basic concepts require some significant investment. So our agencies have agreed that the best path forward is for that park property, that three acres that is in green along the river, remain in public ownership. And per an MOU, we've laid out a general structure for a partnership that would fund construction and maintain the park over time. And this solution's a good outcome for the public who want to have a beautiful place to enjoy the river, but it also is good for development because they can be confident the park will be maintained and it'll be a positive and attractive amenity to nearby development. But wait, there's more. We've also been working on addressing known contamination issues that's accumulated on the site for over 100 years of history on the property. So that top picture, I wish you could see it in person because you really get a sense of scale, but that is excavation of what was 100,000-gallon bunker C oil tank behind the steam plant. That was one of the fuels that fueled the original boilers to that plant. It's like twice the size of a helicopter pad. And if you can see that little yellow dot, I think that's Kevin. So that just gives you a sense of scale of how big that was underground and that has been since removed. And then the larger picture is asbestos remediation that's happening inside the interior of the steam plant currently. And really, the takeaway is here is that eWeb's committed over $1 million of decommissioning and remediation work to give the steam plant the best chance of a second life. And the city has brought funds to help as well. The EPA Brownfields grant has, I think, nearly $700,000 available. It's a three-jurisdiction coalition to conduct environmental assessments community-wide. And the eWeb headquarters property was one of the prime properties to target those funds. So with grant support, we've already conducted the preliminary site assessment. And all these green dots, which kind of looks like measles on the property, but those are areas that the consultants have recommended for further testing. And that might seem ominous when you see the number, but that's really good because it will create certainty. And even if any of those tests positive, there'll be funds available for cleanup. So here we are, after years of design and planning work, we're taking those last critical steps in the process. Last fall, the eWeb board declared 17 acres of the site surplus, so that's that area in the yellow. And that's basically almost the entire site with the exception of the headquarters building. And then east of the steam plant, there's where the substation and the cap site sits. So rather than put a for-sale sign up or parcel out different pieces of the property, an RFQ was issued and that was recommended as the best approach to seek a master developer who could turn the community's vision into a cohesive redevelopment plan for the entire site and that would bring the highest value to eWeb and the community. Here's the criteria that we're looking for in the development team and we released the RFQ in March. And we are very encouraged that we received responses from four highly-regarded teams. The selection process is now underway to identify the development team that best meets these criteria. The team that has a creative vision, a proven track record, financial capability and technical savvy to execute a project of this magnitude that also delivers on the values and vision expressed in the master plan. An evaluation team, which includes eWeb staff, city representatives and our Eco Northwest consultants, has narrowed this down to three finalists. And you've probably read about these in the paper, so I'm just going to touch on them very, very briefly. The first team is our Trammell Crow Company. This is one of the nation's leading developers and investors in commercial real estate. The submission came out of their Portland office. They have a huge and wide-ranging portfolio, but some projects you might be familiar with include the ORI project in the Riverfront Research Park. And then their primary architect firm, GBD, had a leading role in the brewery blocks, which is the picture you see here in Portland. I guess we have brewery blocks here too, but that's not the one. Where should I? The second team is the UVO Foundation. The foundation manages the endowment for the University of Oregon and they saw this as a unique local investment opportunity. The foundation has partnered with a team of developers, including master developer Hal Ferris of Spectrum Development Solutions out of Seattle. Some familiar projects the partners have been involved with is Crescent Village, which you can see in this picture, Broadway Place. And if you've been to Seattle's Chinatown lately, they've done a significant warehouse and housing renovation project and the name, I'm not even going to try to pronounce, but it's like Uji Maya. See how that turns out in a minute. Lastly, there's Williams and Dame. They've been around for many, many years. They're a well-respected firm. They've done highly acclaimed mixed-use urban neighborhoods up and down the west coast. Besides this picture of the Hoyt Street Yards in Portland, which was really the first catalytic project that started the Pearl District, they played a major role in making the South Waterfront project happen in Portland in partnership with Oregon Health Science University, So we're incredibly fortunate to have serious interest from this caliber development team and who see the opportunity of moving us from kind of the current condition to maybe something more consistent with our contemporary thinking of how cities and rivers should really interface. And maybe something even like this, this is my big animation, so, woo-hoo, it worked. All the teams have an impressive portfolio of successful transformative redevelopment. They all have brought local firms as part of their teams and they all embrace the idea of using the master plan as a foundation for the future. Very encouraging news. So how do we choose? The selection of a master developer is a multi-part process. We've completed scoring the written submissions and we're now moving on to interviewing the three finalists. Here's the schedule for you. The interviews are a chance for us all to meet the teams in person and learn more about their development concepts. We have some questions prepared to drill down on some key issues like how are they going to make decisions as a team? Where might development start that will catalyze the rest of the site? How will they create the most value for us and what's the expected timeline? And how do they envision the process moving forward if they are selected? We'd love members of the council and the public to join us. For the interview process, you can come to any or all of it if you're available. And we'll have feedback forms available so that any attendee who wants to share their impressions can do so and that will be part of our collective evaluation process. And lastly, here's the timeline. So we have, we're in the solicitation and evaluation part of the process. In August and September, after the interview process, we'll move on to follow-up financial due diligence, reference checking, as well as site tours to help us with this decision. And if all this process results in a clear, preferred master developer team, in October, the general manager, Greg, will be recommending a team to the board to begin negotiations. And this is kind of speculative, but you know, our hope is that we'd see something happening on the ground as early as 2015. So I'm just going to close with our best hopes that through a thorough and diligent evaluation and research process, we can select the team that's demonstrated they possess the experienced talent, qualifications and necessary skill set to implement a legacy redevelopment of our downtown Riverfront, that they can balance high-quality development with a reasonable timeline for completion and return value to eWeb, ratepayers and the broader community. And it's the team that inspires the trust and confidence that they will continue to work in the spirit of partnership and community support. That's really been the hallmark of this project all along. So I'm not sure I can overstate the magnitude of the opportunity before us and the impact to all of Eugene's residents. I'm just glad that I have a small role in being part of it.
Thank you for the presentation. It's very exciting, actually. It is exciting to think about that connection of the downtown to the river and the river really surfacing and to the importance that it should be for our community in every way that it should be. really surfacing and to the importance that it should be for our community in every way. It's important already, but it, but the connections could be greater for everyone. So I, we really look forward to it. And I, personally, I just think you have wonderful opportunity with the responders to your RFP, so I'll be looking forward to watching you go through that.
Yeah, we hope you can join us.
And I did want to say a couple of things real quickly. One is, Denny, in your presentation, you talked about our investment in downtown that leveraged private investment. So we invested 20 to get, how much investment downtown that we know of right now?
I don't know the recent count, but it's something in the neighborhood of over 200 million, 230 million. Hopefully that will continue to grow. Some of those have been public, some of those private. If you look at City Hall and some other things that kind of are the Brian Obie project, there's, there's other opportunities that even could grow that further, actually.
Thank you. And the other thing I wanted to just surface here is not very long ago, we had a presentation over things that came out of our livability grant work together. And one of the visions out of that that was brought before us was the river districts and how we might connect those river districts from Eugene on, through to Springfield. This seems like such an enormous opportunity for that. And I just want to make my pitch, which is that I have always thought that it would be wonderful if whoever develops it thinks in terms of river-oriented development, in terms of making it unique to the riverfront, so you're not duplicating what we have somewhere else in the, in the community in terms of retail or in terms of how people can live and their opportunities. If there's ways that we can, as a community, emphasize that we actually don't take advantage of the water here enough and the, and the outdoor and arts opportunities that come with that. So having something that's very unique in terms of it, of both its cultural and artistic things, components and, you know, opportunities like people who want to kayak or, I mean, I just think there's something here that's very unique to the, I'm sitting next to the river man here, but I'm just saying, I, I think we should fully take advantage of that. That seems like it's such a, a unique opportunity to add a whole nother element to our community that isn't quite here right now.
I couldn't agree more. And I think that both the, the shape of the site lends itself towards doing something not quite normal because it's not a grid pattern. And then the 100-year history of the site also lends itself to something very different. We can bring some of those artifacts into being and there, there is enormous opportunity and I think Eugene likes to be unique.
I had a meeting a few years back with the AIA. They, they do things where they look at parts of communities and give mayor suggestions for things that, about, and they took on that part of the community. And their, their suggestion, which I just mentioned, was that that gives you an opportunity to present a whole new use for, for the people of your community that could be really exciting and interesting and fun for, for all of us, so. Okay, Councilor Soret?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I wanted to say, even though this decision was made a while ago, I really appreciate actually the approach of using a master developer. I think that seems really smart, both in terms of maintaining some cohesion within that landscape, but also being efficient in the use of the public resources that it takes up to vet the proposals and implement a plan with developers and not having multiple parties that are being dealt with as we look at that rather large piece of property. So I think that was a, a smart decision on the part of E-Web to approach it from that way. And then thank you for reminding us about the, the Greenway, the riverfront piece that will remain a public park. I think that's really important to remember, that we're not turning the whole piece of property over to private development, that there'll be an important public asset right there at the riverfront. And then I was, the Brownfield funding, was that part of what came out of the Lane Livability Consortium work?
Yes, we used the Lane Livability work to fund the grant writing and to really launch the, the application. And the Lane Livability work, the feedback we got, it did definitely position us to get that grant and it was a really large grant. So yes, it's definitely connected to that work.
Well, good job on that, to leverage those resources for this purpose. That's exactly what that kind of funding is meant to do, is to give us the opportunity to redevelop land within our urban growth boundary and make it viable for people to live and, and work and enjoy restaurants and whatever other activities we end up having there. So thanks very much for the good work and for the update.
Commissioner Brown?
So, thank you very much. I really appreciate it and I too will look forward to this being developed. But just a couple of things for, for the record is, you know, not only is all this tax exempt right now, but also the county property that's going to be developed under the Obie thing. So there's a lot of opportunity for the community to see development and increase for our tax base. But when we're talking about cooperation and things, you may, you may see, they say, they may seem small now, but things like a whistle-free zone, that's in ordinance. And if we're going to have housing and we're going to have lodging and those things come before these bodies, you may want to think about that, about, about how that's going to affect and impact the livability of those particular environments. And the same thing with the mill race. Although that's not been called for to be daylighted or anything in this process because of engineering, there is a cost to pump water into that. And whether or not that question comes before this body or whatever body it does in the future, in the long term, just keep that in your mind because I don't think that water's necessary to function where, at the university, maybe Steve can correct me on that, but you know, how that in the long term, if that's going to have water in it the next three to five years, I don't know if that question's been answered in this community yet. So questions about how we can work together, those are just questions, but I just thought I'd bring them up for plot.
Great. Councilor Pryor?
Thank you. You remember in Field of Dreams when he says, "If you build it, they will come." I think if he built a septic drain field, I don't think they would have come. He built a ball field because they were ball players. And that gets back to the notion that if you want to build something that they will come to, you have to build what they want. And that makes it critical that you build something very thoughtfully, something that will be a draw for people, a destination. And I think the mayor and others are getting at that point, that if you had just stuck a for-sale sign up there, you don't know what would have been built and they might not have come. And I'm, and I'm really grateful that you decided to not just hand it off, that you did decide to go through this in a thoughtful way. And it took longer, but I think the outcome, what you build, will cause them to want to come because it will be built in a way that will attract people and that gets back to the notion of a destination. I think if you just build housing and a couple of restaurants, yeah, that will, you know, some will come, but not a lot will come. I think the whole notion that has been kind of incorporated this is to create more of a public destination, whether it's through arts or whether it's through access to the river or through other things that attract people, that can provide the catalyst around which other things such as housing and restaurants and other stuff will, will work dynamically together. And I think you can only get that when you go through the kind of thoughtful process that you've been doing, rather than just looking at it in terms of, of dollars and cents. Dollars and cents are important, but also how it can benefit the community in the, in the larger interconnection of pieces. For that, I'm also very grateful and I really look forward to seeing how that partnership will help to ensure that what we ultimately build will have the maximum attractiveness so that people will come and they will come for a variety of reasons. And I look at some of the things you're proposing to do here, improving access to the river. Right now on that property, if I wanted to go to the river, I'd fall down a slope and land in the water and it might kill me. You're going to have to do something to make it more accessible, to provide the roads and the sewers and the infrastructure. That requires us as public partners to actually step up and help with that process. The private side of it will do a lot, but they can't do it alone. And we will then have to continue that partnership all through the whole development process. And I think if we're all prepared to do that, as we realized we needed to do downtown, I think we can do some incredibly significant and attractive things in this area. And so I really applaud the process you've gone through because you really had that in mind.
Mr. Manning?
Thank you, Mayor.
You might need another microphone.
All right, thank you. First off, Mayor, thank you very much. I want to applaud Janine, city staff, all the work that you put into this. I know that this has been a long process. I think that this was the right process to go for this particular project. However, I think in the future that we may have some other opportunities and perhaps we want to streamline the process and not invest so much of our time in this. I think that for this particular one, based on the location, it was very appropriate. It did cost, it did cost considerable amount of money and, and resources and stuff, but E-Web does have some other property, perhaps in some other areas and stuff that may be able to do away with or relinquish later on in the past, that we kind of be mindful of the costs that we're charging the ratepayers in our involvement in this and probably streamline the process moving further. But this is excellent. I appreciate the city council and their involvement with this to get this process moving along. But it was a long process. Took a long time. And so, congratulations, we're not there yet. I see the light at the end of the tunnel and perhaps the train will end up, you know, depart the tunnel and we can see real progress done along the line.
Without a whistle.
Without a whistle.
I'd just say that, yeah, this is a once-in-a-lifetime project and maybe once every 100 years, the intent is not for it to take 100 years.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the presentation and I appreciate all of the real thoughtful work that's gone into this. Everyone has mentioned all of the valuable things that we'll see over the next few years with, with this. And I, I think you're right, this is a legacy project that will last, that we'll be talking about, you know, the community will talk about hundreds of years from now. One of the pieces that Commissioner Brown brought up is something I hear about in emails, we talk about and we say, but we don't, I haven't heard us take action on it that I'm aware of, so I guess I'm just going to do it. Beth, can we have a work session?
For you.
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay, then never mind that. Yeah, for the train.
Yes, she is.
I just wanted to make sure we were doing that because I, I agree, that's come up so many times, we need to take care of that. All right, thank you.
I'd just add to that, that when it does come up, it would be very helpful for us to hear from you and any other partners we can bring to the table because we need to speak as a voice about why it's important to do something about that. And that's in terms of livability throughout our community, so, as well as this new project. So I think this is something that we'll, we need to sort of leverage our mutual muscle together on, on this. And since the last time we had that conversation, I think the conversation over quiet zones has changed considerably from the federal perspective and from the state perspective. And I know that Salem has had some success with that, so there's no reason why we shouldn't have some success with it too, so. Yeah. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay.
What we'll do with the video, we'll send out the link.
Okay.
I think that might be the best way to do that.
All right. So before you leave, let me just say once again, on behalf of our city and all the folks who live here, how much we appreciated how we got through that storm this last year. It was very challenging, the length of it and the seriousness of it was very challenging for everybody. But I do think the preparation, I do think the partnership, I do think all of the city and E-Web and all the other partners really stepped up to make it relatively, given what we were facing.
Thank you.
Pretty darn good in terms of that. So I just want to leave on that note of that appreciation, not only for the partnerships we have every day, but the kind of partnership it gives us when we face things that are very, very difficult together. Thank you all very, very much.